Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen for Tuesday, December 4th, 2018. You would please rise during this conference.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
First order of business is correspondence. We have quite a bit tonight. It's not our practice to read individual letters into the record. I'd like to recognize the following individuals who took time to visit today to write to us: Gloria Whaling, Anonymous Bethel Resident, in fact, I think it says Anonymous Concerned Bethel Resident, Mr. Bob Legner, Danielle Monroe, David Ko, and Stephen Gallagher. So, thank you to all of those for writing in. And these letters will be part of the public record. Next order of business is public input. And just to remind you, the rules for public input is please rise, give your name and address for the record. Dionne may ask you to spell your name, just to make sure we have it correct. But we don't have a microphone tonight, so just use your big outdoor voice.
Can I just ask a question? You said one of the letters was anonymous?
Yes.
Oh, I don't like that.
I have a right to write in. So, public input. Is anybody in the left-hand chair? Yes, sir.
James Nadeo, 14 Countryway. Over the past few weeks, our town has been engaged in a serious and sometimes difficult conversation about inclusion and what that should look like. This is a discussion that certainly elicits some strong emotions. As the advocate, I want to clarify one point that seems to be getting misrepresented or misunderstood at some. There was never an attempt by any person or group to remove the creche. There were only attempts made to also participate in the display of personal meaningful identity on public software, and widely known as the practice of continuing this holiday season. Many people were upset when the American Atheist Legal Center sent a letter to the Board of Selectmen and thought that that letter was requesting that the nativity scene be removed or the application denied. That is not true. The letter sent addressed a motion made to the Board of Selectmen's meeting on November 13th to approve the first application of the year, the application for the creche, and to subsequently approve no other applications until after New Year, when a new committee could be created and a new policy approved. This is from the press release dated November 16th. Quote, "Today, the American Atheist Legal Center sent a letter to the town of Bethel, Connecticut, asking the Board of Selectmen to rescind a recent decision permitting a nativity scene to be the only winter display erected in PT Barnum Square, a public park in town," close quote. It's important that distinction be made, that the public understands that at no point in time was anyone campaigning for the removal of the nativity scene. There were only efforts made to install additional displays in recognition of other philosophies or one or more of the 14 other religious holidays celebrated between November 20th and January 24th. If there is one thing I hope everyone in this room can leave with tonight is this: we need to be cognizant of and recognize the need for diversity of ideas in public discourse and in public spaces. Everyone should have a voice. I appreciate the meaning placed in the nativity, and I understand the importance of that to so many of my neighbors. I know Bethel values teaching and appreciation of different cultures and beliefs, and there's no better example of that than our public school, my son's abandoned, which do a phenomenal job of teaching our children to do so. Acceptance is not enough. We should push for more than simply accepting there are other religions or religious or cultural beliefs in our world. We should continue to embrace them, learn from them, and from the people who follow them. And I'll end with this quote from Rabbi Jonathan Sacks, which a friend here tonight shared this week in celebration of Pankot, that I think is relevant to this discussion. Quote, "For though my faith is not yours, and your faith is not mine, if we are each free to light our own flame, together we can banish some of the darkness of the world."
Thank you. More public input.
Danielle Monroe, 9 Main Street Court. I'm going to apologize before I begin that it's a long one. I have very hard time reading. Last week, I sat here with many of you, and I listened to the public comments from our fellow neighbors. And though the -- excuse me, and through the course of that meeting, I felt a lot of very difficult emotions, they gave the impression of a huge divide between me and most of you. It wasn't until later that I came to realize that my emotions and yours probably shared more ground than I had considered, but were sparked by very different things. I feel like my ideas and beliefs are under attack, as do many of you. I feel views that are very deeply important to me are being shunned and minimized, as do many of you. I felt completely misunderstood, and perhaps some people that way as well. Unlike some of those in attendance here last week, I didn't take the opportunity to share my feelings nor express most of my thoughts, and I'm sure, as I stated a moment ago, that it's clear to many of you that I am not a person of few words and am not someone who shies away from engaging in public discussions. But last week was exceedingly hard. This entire conversation the town has been having has been exceedingly hard, and I realize that's probably another feeling that we all share, though again, for different reasons. Perhaps if we can start from there, what we share, we can actually find the space to listen to each other more openly about where we differ. I can assure you that I listened to everything said here last week while in attendance. I even re-listened more than once to the videotape posted online. And now that I've found my own words, I hope that you will give me that same respect. I moved to this town 13 years ago, and from my very first winter here, I was struck by the creche on the town hall. I was surprised to see it placed on town property and surprised that it was the sole representation of a religious belief system. And to be honest, I've been waiting for this situation to devolve since then. When you grow up embracing an unpopular viewpoint and face discrimination for those beliefs from your childhood, you learn to be quiet unless you're ready for the backlash. But you also grow conditioned with being minimized for your beliefs, and that is a big part of what kept me quiet all these years, but that doesn't mean I didn't notice and it doesn't mean I didn't care. I've had many conversations with like-minded friends in our community over those years, and I can assure you that many others have cared long before now as well. So, when one of my friends came forward and decided that he would like to put himself out there and apply for a permit for a display that he knew he would face significant backlash from, I fully supported him. Unfortunately, after filing his permit, the town adopted a policy where only the first permit would be approved, as James just expressed, and that's not in line with our legal obligation to all citizens, which did result in a letter from the AALC, though this was not at his request. And that letter was not a threat to sue the town, as many have been repeating over and over. You don't have to take my word for it. It's readily available to be read, and I would encourage all of you to read the actual words in the letter. Now, I understand that some here feel as though their traditions and beliefs are under attack. I have heard so many statements to that effect over these weeks, and I believe that stems from a lot of information that has been circulating and a lot of accusations that there was some attempt to block the placement of the creche. I can certainly understand how that would make you feel threatened and angry, if that were the case, because that's exactly how I felt last week here in my neighbors doing the exact same thing to James' banner. But at no point did anyone come forward and scrutinize the permit for the creche in the manner that we saw here last week for the banners. At no point did anyone question the dedication plaques, warnings, the dimensions of the display, the validity of the insurance binder. At no point did anyone make any attempt to impact that display. While it may feel to some of you that your beliefs are being threatened, please note that in actuality, no one challenged the comment for creche, but we can't say the same about the other. Now, this year at least, I believe there will likely be multiple displays on the wall, and we will share space there, just like we share all the other public spaces in our town. We can either celebrate that, the inclusiveness and diversity of it, or we can continue to sit in angry and threatened spaces. Personally, I'm pleased that for the first time in all the years that I've lived here, I will likely see a representation of my own beliefs on that space. And it is true that my personal belief regarding the creche is that it would be better placed on private property along with any and all other religious displays. Those are my feelings. But that being said, I've heard many people over these tense weeks stating that an inclusive display would be a wonderful addition to our town, and I can definitely support that, though I do still question whether we will truly be able to come together enough to achieve it. I suppose the way this meeting proceeds will be a good indication of whether that's possible. Regardless, my beliefs certainly also include well wishes to all of my friends and neighbors for many things, including everyone in this room, and I know my friends offer those same wishes to me in return. I hope you will as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. More comments? Other comments? Yes, sir.
Tonya Rigo, 11 Grandview.
I'm sorry, the last name?
O-R-R-I-C-O.
Thank you.
I've lived in and have paid property taxes in this town for 30 years. My wife has lived in Bethel for close to 50 years. We were married in St. Mary's Church and raised a family here. I believe that gives us a good perspective on what has worked for the Bethel community and what hasn't. The nativity scene has worked well for Bethel, and I believe it should stay in its spot for as long as the loving Christians who manage it will continue to do so. It's a blessing to have members of the community managing such a beautiful Christmas in Svalve. I am in favor of and agree with creating a policy and guidelines that allows others to display a positive message. But what I'm not in favor of is a disingenuous, insincere "Happy Holidays" banner from a group that identifies themselves as atheists. One minute atheists are calling for removal of the nativity, the next minutes are looking to fly a banner wishing "Happy Holidays" from your atheist neighbors. The banner is an underhanded shot at Christianity meant to mean, if an atheist wants to fly a "Happy Holidays" banner next to the nativity and doesn't have the intention to offend, then they can remove the atheist designation. If the designation says, "Your neighbor who wants to wish me or anyone else happy holidays", I'm in total favor.
More comments? Any other comments?
Paula Antolini, Jacob's Lane.
Do you want to use the microphone?
No, I'll talk loud.
Okay.
I have a lot to say, but I'm just going to keep it to four suggestions that I don't think that you are stuck at all by having to follow a certain law. So, number one would be ban all displays, and no one wants that, but it would solve the problem. Number two would be allow all displays. No one wants that either, because opposite displays disrespect one another in a lot of people's eyes. And we don't want a town with Satan displays. I hate to say that, but a lot of people feel that, or craziness, or whatever the issue may be. Number three, move the display about 50 feet to the property of Perry Anastasikas, I can't always say his name, which he has offered to do. He said he could remove the fence, whatever, and don't allow any displays in the town. That's another solution. And number four would be leave the nativity where it is and amend the new application rules to say, which was your original thing, only one display allowed in the square at a time, and in this case, it was the nativity that has sort of seniority, and other displays must be a certain distance away in the town. Could be two blocks, it could be a mile, whatever you want to decide, so not to disrespect one another. And that's the basic bottom line of all of this, is that it's about respect or disrespect, however you want to look at it. I don't think that anyone that installed the nativity or any other display from a religion is doing it to, you know, push out another religion. And that seems to be the way this was done with the atheist display. It started out with his words saying, I won't mention it because you don't want me to, but --
That's not the current --
No, but I'm saying it started out one way, which was the original aim, and then it was backtracked. So, again, no one is there to push out anyone else. So, these are four solutions that I think are viable.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, sir.
First part is, one second.
Your name, sir.
One second. I'm now a town resident. Am I allowed to speak?
We would prefer that we have Bethel residents speak, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Thank you for attending. Yes, sir.
(inaudible) 22-year resident of Bethel. We sit here, we talk about differences. Why is it all about differences? It's about whether we have faith in a religion or we don't have faith in a religion, whether we're Republican, whether we're a Democrat. When we sit here in this community of Bethel, we're a community. Let's talk about our similarities. 580 people showed up on Saturday night to support the Scotty Fund, a charity that's right here in this town. There's hundreds of people that donate their time to Brotherhood Nation, the Bethel Community Food Pantry, the Hero Project, Really for Life. Let's talk about our similarities and where we all work together and where we work best. And let's talk to each other, so we don't have this.
Thank you. Further comments? Further comments? Sir, if you'd like to make a brief statement, go ahead, but can you give me your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Anthony Griego, G-R-I-E-G-O. I'm a resident of Hampton, Connecticut, and as you can see, I'm a veteran. I'd like to just clarify something for people. The Veterans Administration recognizes 38 religious symbols that can be, they're called emblems of faith for veterans that can be placed on their Bethel headstone. There is 38 symbols, including Christianity, Muslim, 38, including atheists. So, I think, you know, everybody should have the opportunity to put a display there. No one, if I, the gentleman stated, nobody's intending to take away the nativity scene from the agreement, but other people would like to be included in that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, one last time, because once we begin the business portion of the meeting, there will be no further Republican vote, there will be no questions and answers. So, are there any other comments?
My name is Sarah Cooteau, and I live in 18th Blue Park. Would you spell your last name?
Sure.
It's C-O-U-R-T-E-A-U. And I would also, I would like to be a voice to those who actually don't celebrate holidays in any form. I'm not currently belong to my religion, but I'd ask any close family members who do. And I think it fits the viewpoint of people for whom the holidays are actually difficult because they are comprised of by religious and other symbols of any kind in public spaces should also be considered in this matter.
Thank you very much.
Brad Holtz, One Fair Trail Drive. I would just like to know if, in this process, it's possible, also building on some of the comments that I've heard tonight, to make sure that the things that we consider are things that are from Bethel. There's a lot of, I think, outside pressures, there's a lot of information in the news about other organizations coming into towns and causing all kinds of controversy. I happen to think that this is a community full of people of good faith, whatever side of the particular point you come to it. And I would just like to see if it's possible to take the work that you folks have already have done and strengthen that so that it really emphasizes that we only consider applications and displays that have a root from folks in town, organizations in town. That folks from outside the community can't influence. That's my opinion.
Ryan Turgeon, 42 Long, Main Street Court. I really don't have a problem if people want to display other things on town property. It doesn't offend me, it doesn't upset me. My only thought process is, and I said it at the last meeting, if I wanted to do something the day of the Memorial Day parade, well, the Memorial Day parade is locked up on that day. So, if I wanted to schedule a 5K that day, they would say, "We're not closing the road for you during the 5K." It would be like me saying, "I want space at the exact location that Food Truck Friday's going on." Well, Food Truck Friday has a precedence that understandable. I can't have the municipal on that day. I think if the town opens its property up to these displays and puts it at Town Hall or whatever, I just feel that the creche has been there for over 40 years, and we should limit spaces to one display at a time. If the creche decides that next year they want to move to private property, then let whoever's banner is next in line go in that spot, and the next one in line can go in another spot. There's plenty of town property where it could be displayed, you know, in a non-offensive way. And I'm not saying Mr. Nadeo's banner or whoever's banner is offensive. What I'm saying is by allowing too many things on that property, you are setting yourself up for a potentially offensive, you know, display. There are, you know, Satanism, I think, would upset a lot of people in town if we put a Satanic altar. I'm not saying it's going to happen, but it could. So, I think when we craft this policy, we have to keep that in mind. And I see no reason why we can't open up different areas of town property for these types of displays and just do it based on a seniority basis. And like I said, if the nativity decides to move to a church, then it can move to a church, and the next display goes there, and they rotate it. That's just my feelings on it.
Any other comments? Any other comments? All right. Let me turn the break back on, so everybody can hear. Before we go on, obviously, we have largely the normal turnout tonight for the reason that we just heard. So, I'm going to make a motion that we move item 11 on the agenda up to be the next item. So, with respect to people's times, any kind of discussion on that? Okay, goes in favor? Aye. Okay, so, we will take that as the next item, and that item reads, "Consideration of Application for Holiday Display on PT Barnum Square." Before I put a motion on the floor and review the materials we have here, I do want to address a couple of things, just to clarify and make sure, because there are several speakers pointed out, there was quite a bit of misinformation and erroneous information, I think the vast majority of which is just accidental, not done maliciously in any way. Number one, the creche was subject to exactly the same criteria as we're going to be using tonight, and I can understand how people would have not known that, because the normal procedure for use of a park and rec facility is an administrative approval that just simply goes through the park and rec office and doesn't come to the Board of Selectmen. So, the insurance, the dimensions, the requirement to provide an image of what was going to be constructed, all of that had occurred before our last vote. And so, again, if you looked at the vote, you'd say, well, you know, everybody's playing by two different rules. I understand that. There was a point that the Board of Selectmen felt that when other applications came in, that we could take that burden off of the park and rec office and establish some standards. But I can assure you that the folks who built and constructed the creche, you know, we set stuff back to them and said, "No, you have, it has to be like this, you have to show us what you're going to do, you have to have insurance, you have to have a sponsor," all of that stuff was done. So, I just want to give you some reassurance that everybody was playing by the same rules right from the start, even though it may not have appeared that way when we look through, back through the minutes. Point number two, as we announced at the last meeting and the meeting before, we have established or, you know, dedicated to establish a committee to create a long-term recommendation. Just to be clear about that, the policy must come from the Board of Selectmen, but we do want to have as many residents as possible participate in this committee to make our recommendation to guide us. And some of the things that we've heard tonight will be front and center in their agendas, such as, is it legal to break up displays and have one display in the town green and have another display somewhere else? There, you know, I'm not going to get into a legal discourse. The town attorney and I have probably spent more time than he ever wants to see with me discussing this. I've spent a lot of time reading through court decisions. The fact of the matter is, there is basically a concept called limited open forum, and it means that if you allow anything, you cannot deny something on the basis that you want to edit its content or you don't agree with its content. So, I understand perfectly what the objections are. You know, I feel it in my heart. I understand it. But the fact is, we have already permitted the creche on the green. We have no legal right to deny another application. And just to be clear, we only have one application. There were some others that came from people out of town. There was one that was kind of, I'm not going to use a judgmental term, but it was withdrawn. The individual wanted to do a Festivus call, and then said, you know, then he wrote back to me to his credit and said, "You know, this is a serious issue. I'm not going to do that." So, we have one application. But we cannot give it a different location that might not be as prominent. That's a problem. We cannot edit its words. So, and I heard in the last meeting, many, many people said, "All right, fine with the minority, would welcome it." But the fact is, change comes hard. I get that. It's not easy. But we have to include nonreligious as well as religious. As our veteran gentleman friend said tonight, it is recognized, you know, there are nonbelievers among us, and they have the same rights as everybody else when it comes to use of public property. So, I just wanted to make those clarifications before we move on. And we do have a revised application from Mr. Nadeo. It does comply with all the requirements. It does have insurance. It's, we've been provided with it an image, which is a horizontal banner, that is not overtly demeaning anybody, any individual, any religion, and all of these here. Because you're out there and we're up here. It says, "To our Bethel community, Happy Holiday Season, whatever you celebrate from your friendly atheist names. A location has been recommended by the Park and Rec Department, which would not be next to the creche, it would be at the other end of the triangle that comprises PT Barnum Square. And it would be, from this diagram, on the west side of the Do Boy statue. It would not obstruct the statue. It's a low four-foot-high banner." So, this is what we have to deal with, and the Board of Selectmen, as you know, in the last meeting, did adopt a policy that is meant to be a temporary policy for the current season, and then we will hopefully devise a permanent procedure and deal with these issues, such as, how many displays is too many? Can we put them in other places? Is there another place within the PT Barnum Square that doesn't offend other people and just make it too crowded for public safety? So, those are going to have to be dealt with. So, I think we have about 13 or 14 volunteers, and the only thing I'd say is be careful what you wish for, because you may find that some of these things are going to be difficult. We will have legal representation to help guide you through that process and keep you up to date. And just before I close my comments, I would like to say that, again, change comes hard. I think we are, as a community, quite lucky that we stay below the radar, because these debates go back into the late '70s and early '80s around the country. Many towns have been forced by court order to alter their displays, to put up things that were quite objectionable to some people at that time in order to comply with court rulings. So, the rest of the world finally caught up to Bethel. So, we will, all I can say is we will deal with it together as a community in the best and most sensitive way we possibly can. So, with that, I do have an application, as I said, that meets the criteria, it's been reviewed by town attorney, by the insurance folks, by Park and Rec. So, let's put a motion on the floor to approve the application submitted by Mr. Nadeo. Sir, a second? Second. You said it's four foot, is it? Four by one? Eight. Eight? Yes. And a little B log? Yeah. Yep. It's not, oh, yeah, one of the criteria, which was not specified in our policy, but just that the Park and Rec wanted to avoid anything to obstruct the Do Boy statue, so it will be a low disclaimer. Any further questions?
Yes, I'll speak to the issue here. Tonight, I decided just to stop by to be objective about this whole issue here. And I stopped at the Do Boy Square Triangle, whatever you want to call it, and I took a look and I walked around, and you know, you have to think about the size of that particular piece of real estate. It's triangular, okay? From the Greenwood front point -- From the Greenwood front point facing the Doughboy statue. And in front of it, you've got a speed sign, 25 miles per hour. Next to it, it's a bus stop sign. And behind that, there are two benches. And then you have a flagpole. Then you have the Doughboy statue. You have the crosswalk made out of brick going in this way, the X formation, plus the sidewalk in front of Greenwood Avenue. And then you've got the Christmas tree in the back. And then what you have is the creche itself. This real estate is pretty crowded already. I have to say that, you know, adding more doesn't help the situation here. And especially if you're going to have a four-foot by eight-foot sign, I guess that's what it is. Consider this, while you take one of these tables right here, this is three feet by roughly eight feet, add another foot this way, standing up that way. You know, you take a look at that, are we junking up? By putting more signs? This just reminds me of complaints during the campaign season. There's too many signs out, especially, you know, especially in front of any candidate's house, okay? Or somebody who's a supporter, you'll see six, seven signs. You know, it's time to be realistic about this whole thing. This has divided our community here a little bit. I understand the legality behind it, but we have to be practical about it. You know, this is a season of joy, happiness, extending holiday greetings to each other. But I'm not going to have something that's just going to be just another thing there. So with that, I'll close. You know I'm going to vote tonight.
I have a point of order.
Yes, sir.
A point of information, I should say. First selectman, you mentioned prominent spot or something being prominent. Can you define what you meant by that?
We'll take that offline.
Okay, I just wanted you to clarify that.
That's instructions for the committee that's going to...
Okay.
Be dealing with this after the holidays.
I agree with Paul a lot. It's a small real estate. I mentioned that at the last meeting, and I don't want to become a board ally there. But that's why we formed a committee to look at this. And I'm in favor of the motion with the sign there. I don't see how we can deny, I'm a person or organization from doing that. It's public property, and we have to be fair to all. And this committee will make a decision or a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen. And the Board of Selectmen will finally have a last second and an issue in there.
Any other, any further comments? So we have a motion on the floor. There are no further comments. Those who favor the signature by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Those votes? Okay, the motion is carried, and the motion is approved. And we will move on with the agenda. In case anybody else would like to hear about other things, we have 10 more writers to cover. Or you can go home and watch Masked Wolf. I'll tell you what, we're going to take a five-minute recess before we continue, in case everybody has any questions on.